To call this regular, the board call roll.
Mayor Querem, Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Mabry.
Here.
Fabia.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment, we have Austin and Taylor on the agenda.
I'm gonna get these to you guys. Thanks for having me tonight, my name's Austin Taylor.
Slide the button toward you. There you go, Austin.
My name's Austin Taylor with North Central Council of Governments. And I'm here tonight, I'll make it brief and short. Thankfully, North Central does not solicit for money, but the other way around, we usually give money out, so it makes my job a lot easier. Tonight, it's just simply, you know, we've been trying to make a concerted effort at council to get back in front of participating communities. Sometimes we have really consistent relationships that build up over time just by project. Other times, we don't see communities for months or years at a time, just because of where they're at, you know, project-wise or where they're at with opportunities. I'm new to council, so I think they're taking advantage of me a little bit because I've been on this road show for like ten months now, and Princeton was called up, so. Tonight, I'm just gonna talk briefly about one major initiative that North Central has going on. It's through USDA, it's called the Rural Development, Rural Community Development Initiative. It's a multi-year project. Basically, it allows the council to continue to do our job, to outreach, to be a conduit, to share information among the multi-county North Central area. They almost help fund us so that we can spend money on communities through workshops, trainings, sharing information. So if you recall, this started last summer, and it was, a lot of participating communities don't remember it happened, but last summer Princeton signed on with about thirty other communities. Basically, there's no commitment, it's just a volunteer opportunity to where we can provide extra funding, training, support, workshops, continuing education on some levels to communities, and Princeton's one of those, and it makes our lives easier. But it also, we're reaching out to communities and seeing what you guys want and what you guys need, so. Earlier this year, we sent a questionnaire, it might've got lost in the files, so I might repay Princeton for that questionnaire, but it's, what could we help provide him, right? One of the interesting things that came out of the initiative and one of the workshops was, a couple months ago, with the Illinois Housing Development Authority, they came from Peru to present, and they talked about both community-based projects for local government and residential-based opportunities. And since we don't deal with private residents at all, right, our community, our mission is just through taxing bodies, I came with some handouts I'll pass out, and I don't know if it's, I think it's appropriate for the city, but we've been giving the communities, banks, lending institutes, institutions, real estate agents, these, and it's a program that, basically, the state has legitimate money to hand out through the federal HUD program, federal HUD department, and they can't seem to spend it all. So it's for residents, for first-time homebuyers, homebuyers that are not first-time, but it's been three to five years since they've purchased. It's for homeowners that are underwater in their mortgages, their mortgage is upside down. There's tens of thousands of dollars for homeowners to take advantage of this program, a little bit of paperwork, right, but that can be expected. For homeowners that are in financial difficulties, be it loss of employment, or a divorce, they've somehow, their revenue stream has been cut significantly. So that's one of the things that just came out of the initiative, was this opportunity to share. I'll leave that with you guys. Other things, the typical week-to-week business and operations in North Central are obviously grant-oriented. Those packets are full of information, I think you guys have a great resource on staff of Brian Giff, so I don't need to go into detail, you can lean on him as well to call our office to get information, but as more things come up, we'll continue to reach out to the city, if something comes up that you need our help, there's nothing too big or too small that we won't, you know, listen and make an attempt at, so. If there's any other questions, I appreciate your time.
Any questions?
Sure.
Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, we'll go over to our City Clerk, Pete Nelson, for the approval of minutes.
Well, let's try Gary Newman.
I want to make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, corrections, I'll roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Now, we'll go to you.
Yeah, now it'll go to me. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the approval of the finances for the last cycle, and under the Department of Public Affairs and Council of Finances, we have total invoices of eighty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. Under the Streets and Public Improvements, we have a total of eighty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Under the Departments of Public Health, Safety, and Civil Defense, we have total invoices of a hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety cents, followed by the Department of Public Property and Utilities, with total invoices of a hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Your honor, these have been reviewed by all members and signed off, and are submitted to the council for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as stated by our City Clerk for the last cycle.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, comments or corrections?
I have two corrections. Under Administration, HCC, Pete, you had put it under Administration, Rachel, you scratched that out and moved it to Street.
Yeah, it was a, oh, sorry. That was an accident that happened in the Street Department, so it comes out of the liability to that duals in the Street Department.
Okay, and then the other one was for the Fire Department. We have Taylor's, I mean Lucas Long Care, seventy dollars, that belongs to the Property Department. Property Department only had two, and they have three seventies.
What's the account number on it?
On the Fire Department?
Yeah.
Here's one-two-hundred-seven-seven-three, it's Lucas Long Care for seventy.
And you're saying it should be?
It should go under Property. On the receipt, Property had three seventies, and the bills here, it only has two. And the Fire did not have the extra seventy.
I wonder if that was Veterans Park? I'm not certain.
Yeah, we'll check the bill and get it corrected.
That's it.
Any other comments, corrections? Motion has been seconded, call roll.
Okay, Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye, now I'll go to regular business, and we'll go back to.
Okay, next item on the agenda is second reading, a second and final reading for ordinance O seventeen-O eleven, amending fees and procedures for commercial landscape and tree disposal on city properties. Be it ordained by the mayor and city council, the disposal of landscape waste collected by city departments and whose waste disposal facilities are additionally utilized by private contractors, shall be subject to the fees as authorized by sixty-five ILCS five-eleven nineteen four and set forth on Exhibit A. Attached here to and made apart hereof and hereby adopted as a landscape waste disposal fees for the city of Princeton. Mayor, this has been reviewed and submitted to the council for disposition.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance O dash seventeen dash zero-one-one.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, we'll take the vote, Rachel.
I don't have any further comments from this.
Any other comments? Motion's been seconded, call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a first reading of ordinance O seventeen-O twelve, an ordinance approving an asset purchase agreement and a waste services agreement for the Princeton Transfer Station. Again, this is for, this is first reading. So whereas the city of Princeton has the authority to adopt ordinances and promulgate rules and regulations that pertain to its government and affairs to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of its citizens, and whereas the following, the following a competitive bidding process, the city desires to enter into an asset purchase agreement substantially on the terms set forth in Exhibit A, attached here to and made apart hereof, and a waste services agreement substantially on the terms set forth in Exhibit B, attached here to and made apart hereof, all subject to the final negotiation approval terms by the city attorney concerning the city's transfer station. And now therefore be ordained by the city of Princeton, County of Bureau, State of Illinois as follows, that the facts and statements contained in the preambles of this ordinance are found to be true and correct, that the mayor and city clerk are upon final approval by the city attorney authorized and directed to execute the asset purchase agreement and waste services agreement, and this ordinance shall be in effect immediately from and after its passage and approval, and all prior resolutions, ordinances, and conflict are inconsistent herewith and hereby expressly repealed, only to the extent of such conflict or inconsistency. Mayor, this has been reviewed by the council, each member, and is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we approve in advance of the second reading, ordinance O dash one-seven dash zero-one-two, which is approving an asset purchase agreement and a waste services agreement for the Princeton Transfer Station.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Before I turn this over to Rachel for some specifics, I would like to say this has been a ongoing process for some fourteen months now. The council has been involved in this process from the very beginning, and we've had multiple one-on-one meetings, multiple executive session meetings. The council directed the terms based on consideration of what we felt was best for the city as a whole, and with those terms in hand, our city manager did an outstanding job handling the negotiations. So this is why I turn it over to Rachel.
So since this is a lengthy document, I'm just kind of go over some of the big points from it. We also have five counties from Republic Services here, if you have any specific questions. Just for starters, the purpose of a transfer station, because some people don't always know, is to gather waste from this surrounding area in the city of Princeton, they take it out there and then they transfer it to IEP permitted landfill. Over fifty-two thousand tons were transferred from the Princeton site in two thousand sixteen. The purchase price, as outlined in the agreement, is two-point-five million dollars, this includes the building and twenty-plus acres of land. And as the mayor mentioned, this agreement is the result of a fourteen-month in-depth evaluation of proposals that were received by three experienced operators in Illinois. So, the city's transfer station was permitted by the IEP in nineteen ninety-two, so it was permitted after the city's landfill had reached capacity and closed, and the transfer station was built. The city leased the transfer station and the property and operations management to Dean's Transfer and successor Illinois Valley Waste since the later time it was open. So, when we looked at selling this, we did a RFP, we had interviews with all of the individuals that were interested in the purchase, and, you know, the sell of this will significantly reduce the city's liability and the city's EPA requirements, while at the same time allowing the city to lock in disposal fees and host fees for thirty years. So residents won't see any change at their curbside for weekly collection of garbage and recyclers, that will stay the same, and it's continued to be collected by city crews each week. In the fall of two thousand seventeen, we'll likely move the recycling center drop-off at the North Buclitt Avenue site, and Republic will create a new drop-off location at the transfer station site. It'll have defined hours of operation, and will be closed on Sunday is most likely. Although we know this type of arrangement might not be popular for everyone, it will allow us to control the escalating of use and the use of the North Buclitt Avenue drop-off site. So the contract with Republic, there are certain terms, fees, and programs that will be locked in for thirty years. Some of these include the disposal rates and host fees, and the contract also allows for an annual electronics recycling event at the site. Republic plans to make some improvements and updates to the campus, and through the agreement, Republic will begin operations July one, two thousand seventeen. So we really think this action is great for all those that use the transfer station, including the city and its residents, and we look forward to working with Republic.
Thank you, Rachel, any comments for council?
I could make just a couple quick comments, I'd like to echo what Mayor Querem said, Rachel's done a tremendous job on this, and I also would like to recognize previous Commissioner, Bob Warren, Bob was on the council when we started this, and he was very supportive, and he had some good suggestions too, so. We had the opportunity as commissioners, or as council members, to add our input, Rachel quarterbacked, and she's worked real hard. Those executive sessions, when you wonder why we go to executive sessions, it's just for this, we discuss your real estate as taxpayers, as residents, and the best program was put together, and so Rachel will get on the menu for working with us, a lot of hours on your part, so thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Does this property now go onto tax rolls, once it's?
So it's been on the tax rolls because it was leased, so it will stand, but there's also extra land in this purchase, so before it was just the five acres, this includes the twenty acres, so there will be a little bit of interest.
And then I read, Rachel, that there's a window of time for Republic to improve the property, put a sign up, make some improvements?
Yeah, they have some plans to improve this, I did forget to mention that, so they'll be doing that as well.
You had mentioned a one-annual electronic?
In there, it says May and September, but, you know, as needed, we would figure that out, but yeah, there is two in the contract, correct?
Okay.
You have a comment? The motion has been seconded, call roll.
All right. Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is that since the state of Illinois Department of Labor has established prevailing wages for Bureau County, they have also declared that those rates go into effect today. And because of that, and because there's nothing in there that we can essentially change with the state's findings of prevailing wage for Bureau County, there is a need to waive the requirement for second reading on ordinance O seventeen-O one-three, establishing prevailing wages.
I move that we waive the requirement for a second reading on ordinance O dash seventeen dash zero-one-three, establishing prevailing wages.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, any comments? Call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O dash seventeen dash O thirteen, would you believe it, it's establishing prevailing wages?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance O dash one-seven dash zero-one-three, establishing prevailing wages.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, any comments? Call roll.
Commissioners Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O dash seventeen dash O one-four, sale of Lot Four in the Princeton Technology Park to ICAN. This is the first reading, and preamble reads here, whereas the city of Princeton is the owner of certain property commonly known as the Princeton Technology Park, and whereas the Princeton Technology Park was designated as a business district pursuant to the provisions of the Illinois Business District Development and Redevelopment Act, whereas the Illinois Critical Access Hospital Network, an Illinois not-for-profit corporation, is desirous of purchasing certain property within the business district legally described as Lot Four in the final plan for the Princeton Tech Park, Phase One. Now therefore be ordained by the city council, the city of Princeton, that the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and attest respectively, and deliver a purchase and sale agreement with ICAN for the sale of the property at the sum of ten-thousand dollars an acre, upon such other terms and conditions as set forth in the purchase and sale agreement attached here to and as Exhibit A. Mayor, this has been reviewed by all council members and submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the first reading of ordinance O dash one-seven dash zero-one-four, which is authorizing execution, delivery of a purchase and sale agreement with the Illinois Critical Access Hospital Network for a certain property located within the Princeton Technology Park.
Second.
Motion has been seconded, any comments? Call roll.
Commissioners Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Yeah, I keep using commissioner, sorry about that. Next item on the agenda is Resolution R dash seventeen dash O two-O, an agreement between the Emergency Telephone System Board of Bureau County Doing Business as Bucom and the city of Princeton, Illinois, to provide single fiber optic utility service. Whereas Bucom has requested a fiber connection between its dispatch operations center at six-fifteen Elm Place in Princeton, and the Bureau County Sheriff's Department Dispatch at twenty-two Park Avenue West in Princeton, and whereas the city of Princeton Department of Electric and Telecommunications is willing and able to provide the connection desired by Bucom, now therefore be resolved that the mayor and city council shall authorize the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Bucom upon review and agreement to the terms enumerated in Exhibit A, attached here to and made apart hereof. Mayor, this has been reviewed by all council members and submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R dash one-seven dash zero-two-zero, an agreement between the Emergency Telephone System Board of Bureau County Doing Business as Bucom and the city of Princeton, Illinois, to provide single fiber optic utility service.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, Rachel?
So just a quick comment, this process is part of the consolidated dispatch that will be taking place at Bucom for the Princeton Police Department and the Bureau County Sheriff's Department, this is the backup that they needed to get approval from the state to operate that facility, so we work with them on that.
Any other comments? Motion has been seconded, call roll.
Councilmembers Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Thank you, Pete, I'll go to city manager.
I need another anything else to add?
Okay, and I have one item that I would have given the task of presenting, Ray Mabry has suggested that we close a portion of Columbus Street to vehicle traffic and transform it into a pedestrian walkway. What I'm going to, I'll be reading, we have, I presented the council with this information a couple of days ago, so everybody has an idea of what I'm gonna say, there's some new information in here, so I'm gonna go ahead, and what we're looking for tonight is a, see where everybody stands on this, and see if there's a consensus on moving on. Columbus Street would be closed from Main Street to just behind Spoons Building. The closure will not affect the alley that runs behind Four Seasons, nor will it affect the parking lot entrance behind Spoons. We would make the rest of Columbus a two-way street, from the rear closure behind Spoons all the way to Church Street. It is currently one-way traveling east, and this would allow those who live on Columbus to access or exit their homes off of Church Street, which they cannot currently do. I have spoken with a representative for Midland Bank, as they will be taking over the building on the corner of Main and Columbus sometime this month, I've also spoken with the owner of Spoons and the owner of the second plant, so they all like and support the idea. I've also spoken with Police Chief Congroot and Fire Chief Chuck Woolley, and they have no issues with the proposals. This street sees very little traffic in the location of the closure, the area to be closed would be about a hundred feet long, seventeen feet wide. Once you get beyond the rear closure, the wide, the street widens to twenty feet all the way to the stop sign and church, so it's plenty of room for two-way traffic. Closing this section of Columbus to vehicle traffic will also allow other uses in addition to the walkway, the area would be accessible for use by Spoons and the bank. Closing the street does not affect the bank's side entrance, nor does it affect the bank's drive-in. Any special event with this section of Columbus Street would require a special event application from the city, we would not be abandoning, the street ownership would remain with the city. The street would be blocked off during a trial period, if the area closure becomes permanent, we would then possibly use removal boards to close off both ends. Regardless of what we use initially or permanently, we would also be able to add three to possibly four new parking spaces on Main Street, one of which may be handicap. This would occur in the area where Main Street meets Columbus, parking is a main, on Main is a premium nowadays with all the new businesses opening on Main Street. I mentioned a trial period, the idea is to give this a trial run, maybe mid-July through October, through September, you know, that'll be discussed, just to see how it goes. If it all goes well, we'll make it permanent, if not, we simply reopen Columbus to traffic, and that can be done anytime between when we close the street to the end of the trial period. So that is the idea, and I'll open it now for the council for any discussion.
What is the, you had mentioned the use for Spoons or Amcor Bank, what would their uses be, that, I mean, like seating for Spoons, or can they legally do that when they get a liquor license to the building they're existing in, they'd be drinking on city property then?
Well, they do that now on Main Street, on the sidewalk, they do have the sidewalk cafe policy, and I would assume this would just apply to the, to block Columbus Street. If, and I, I don't know if she would have interest, but if she wanted to, the owner of Spoons wanted to put cables out, they would also be, I would think, there would be guidelines, and they would also have barriers, although it's still a walkway. But, yeah, that would certainly be something that she would have to come to us about, and there would be guidelines, and we would work with her on that.
Could another retail use that space? Could Makery, or Meadow, or somebody also ask to use that space for an event on a weekend?
I think for a weekend, I would think that, you know, with a special use permit?
But it would be, it would be an application process, whether it would say, we want to use this space on this day and time. How's lighting at night down there? Does the door streetlights bleed into that adequately, anyone have a clue? I mean?
Spoons has lighting. There's lighting on the side of the building?
If I could elaborate just a little bit, the thought is, I spent a little time on Main Street, and the, that little street kind of intrigues me, it is seventeen feet wide, and the thought was to encourage pedestrian traffic, try it for ninety days, or get through the Homestead Festival weekend, I would donate the planters, that would be put there on Main Street to block the traffic, and there'd be some orange cones to start out with, in front of the planters, to kind of warn people so we don't have an accident hitting the planters. But I just think it's an opportunity to continue to enhance our downtown with pedestrian traffic. When you travel around to communities that are successful with their downtown, it's a lot of pedestrian activities, just like this past weekend, we couldn't probably squeeze much more in, when you looked at all the activities that happened this weekend, Laura was guiding the trolley up and down on Saturdays, we had the suicide prevention walk, we had the community band concert on Sunday night, we had, oh, what else?
Arden Park.
Arden Park. I really appreciated, the police department had their officers on bicycles, I think, I think our downtown was coming, and it was all family-related activities, nothing that you'd be embarrassed about having where your grandchildren's attending. By trying this for, say, the ninety days approximately, closing this off with the planters, gives us an opportunity to see if this is a positive thing for the downtown or negative. And when I brought this up to the mayor, I said, obviously, we need to talk to the building owners on each side of this that would be immediately affected, Spoons and the bank, as well as the ladies that have a salon just down the street from there. And so, I know the mayor went and talked to them, and my understanding was it was all very positive from those folks. So, I think we tried it, that's I propose, I hope that the council members will give me the opportunity to see how this works, and if during the ninety days, it doesn't, we have some feedback that it's not working, we pull the planters and realize that that may not have been the best idea, I just see it as an opportunity to tweak the, that area, make, enhance it, and the folks at Spoons have done a tremendous job with their building, and they, it seems like their outside dining is very positive as far as the reception, and this might give them a chance to have some more outside dining, but that wasn't the intent, the, the whole process was to enhance that area there. It's kind of a dark little street, you know, the street further to the north, which would be Marion Street, it's twenty feet wide, but it also has the advantage of having a empty green space towards the Apollo Theater, there's an empty space that was a building one time, that's probably fifteen feet wide, so that's a much more inviting space right now, and that one, of course, we would. So that's a much more inviting space right now, and that one, of course, we wouldn't consider doing this too, because that's more of a major artery going back and forth into the, the parking in the back. So I would just encourage the council, they would consider trying this for approximately the ninety days to see how it's, if it's a positive or negative thing. I think it's a positive, but again, I, we're not out any money, it's not any cost to the city, so that's where I'm at.
One of the Main Street revitalization goals that came out of the Community Vision Workshops was making our Main Street a vibrant retail dining, entertainment, and lodging destination. And part of the strategies involved in that is, when you talk about Spoons, we want to encourage the development for outdoor dining. That's, that's very popular, and that's what people like to do, they like to sit outside and eat, and it's all good.
Well, I can, I, I totally get the idea of using this street as a walkway, but I'm also hearing that we want to make it available to Spoons. Now, I would, I would not want to see Spoons take ownership of that street, and all of a sudden, it's not a walkway anymore, it's an extended restaurant. So we'd have to somehow make sure that it is what it was intended for, and that's a walkway primarily, and then somehow work out and arrange it with Spoons so they don't infiltrate that street to the extent where it can't be used as a walkway.
We're not giving up ownership of the street. It's a city of maintenance.
I think if anything was going to be used, as mentioned before, we'd have to follow our policy on sidewalk dining, and we also would have the special event permanent application, so everything would have to follow those policy rules that are set out in there.
I guess another question, and maybe towards Ray, once you've kind of spearheaded this idea, what's the vision? Do you grind out the asphalt? Is this going to be grass? Is this going to be stepping stones, gardens? I, no, I, I think that we do, we're going to use the history, keep it simple, and what we're going to do is we're going to put those planters out for the ninety days, but if that's to success, then we would maybe look at buying some of these, they call them traffic boulders, which are usually typically a black pipe that's got some decoration to it, a little bit, it's not just a smooth steel pipe that are four feet tall, maybe three of those on the end towards Main Street that can be slid out of the ground, so in case we had to bring a vehicle down there for servicing. The black top would remain, the sidewalk would remain. There could be some additional planters added, intermingled in there, but no, no removal of the street, no, you know, no additional extensive green spaces, use of some planters to add some character to it and some color, but nothing besides that.
The black top stays as it is.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Did anyone ask the homeowners how they feel about this?
Didn't ask the homeowners, because if we make church or Columbus Street two-way, I think they would be leaping joy with that. So it's not going to impinge them any, they're going to be able to access their homes from Church Street, which they cannot do today.
Now, on our sidewalk policy, doesn't it say allow five feet of sidewalk? What is the?
Yeah, five feet of sidewalk space to walk through, correct? We'd have to look at it if this were the situation, since that whole road would technically be a sidewalk then.
And when we were first approached with this, it was, you were, Mayor, you have stated, anticipated that lights would be strung and stereo music would likely be added. At the cities, at?
I would think, if, if Spoons wanted to put some, I would think that would probably come from the merchants up there. I don't think that's anything that we would do.
That's kind of given them control of it, though.
The, the city owns the street and will maintain it, you know, if they, if they come to us and they have these ideas, they still have to come to us for the, for the approval, and then, you know, we would go forward with it. We would either allow it or deny it on whatever they want to do up there.
And I think we do have some businesses, I know that there's a resale that sells China and stuff, I think that that area, they have music that plays, quiet subtle music and background music, so I'm envisioning, if, right now, if Spoons wanted to put some outdoor speakers on their existing building, I think that they could do that. I know we have a noise ordinance out in play, so I think they could have done that no matter what.
That, that's correct.
Would we be changing the ordinance for lights, on strong lights?
Not sure we're going to have one.
Yes, we do, it's only for holidays.
You know, I, I'd like to ease into this, I'd like to say, let's try the planters for the ninety days and see how it goes with no stream lights at this point, you know, let's just see how it flies, and that way, we haven't opened a can of worms on the lights instead of we have to all of a sudden start to take them back down.
I think we're kind of anticipating what might not be a serious problem, so let's just give it a try.
Exactly.
Okay, in my experience of the many ped walks I've been on, are generally centrally located with businesses surrounding the whole ped walk. I see this benefiting one business. The bank is closing in September, September first, I believe, so it's just one business down there. It is at the far south end, we're not even centralizing in Main Street. Looking from the outside, it looks like we are favoring one business.
I would say this, that it's, no matter what we do, let's say, for example, we, we're going to spend the hundred thousand dollars to renovate that site or the parking lot behind what I call the old Spurgens Building, which I know that that dates me as far as how I lived here in this community, but some people would say, well, gee, we've, we are giving a, a lot of new assets to the company store, to the Spurgens Building, to those folks, because they have direct access off that parking lot. But it's for everybody, that parking lot that we're approving is for everybody. This pedestrian walkway, I think that this way, if the mayor approached the owners of the bank, which was, is now, or is going to be Midland State's Bank, and they were very receptive to it, I don't think there was any hesitation. Was there a mayor on their part?
No.
And they're, they're going to have to market that building to somebody, I think they see it as an asset having that walkway, based on what we've been doing in, in the community. Again, I think there's a certain momentum that we've been able to gain in this whole process, and again, Laura, I appreciate the trolley, you know, a year ago, we, we wrestled over whether we should be taking the donation of the trolley. Again, I, I loved that trolley on Saturday, it was people in it, they were, they were having a good time going back and forth. We wouldn't have thought about the trolley a couple of years ago, but that was a, a chance to try it. But there are some people, when we were looking at, at that trolley, it was more of a liability. I consider the trolley an asset today. I think this walkway would be the same thing. I'm just asking for ninety days to try it.
I think the walkway would be great, more centralized.
This, this is kind of the oddball street, you know, we don't, this street doesn't cut across, it hits, it would have, you know, went through Citizens Bank or Heartland Bank, so it was just the, kind of the orphaned street that I felt that would be enhanced by having a walkway.
We have nothing to lose by trying to do it. There's just no harm at all by saying, let's just try it, and if we find out, like, we're going to learn some things from doing it, we won't know anything if we don't.
It's a trial basis.
I appreciate that, Jerry. I guess the other thought is too, we do have a walkway in the same block, it's not too many buildings back, which has been there for years.
For faucets.
And then, if we're looking at a grant for the, the parking lot behind the, this Spoons area, it's kind of shutting off another entryway to the parking lot.
No, it doesn't shut it off. The, the parking lot would remain open all the way around, you would access it from different areas, either the alley or Marion coming down Columbus from Church.
I see that too, but I'm, I'm thinking of tourists and people coming into town not as familiar with it, it's kind of shutting off one more entrance back to a joint one.
Well, we, we, the city is buying a sign-making machine, and we do want to put some better wayfinding signs up regarding municipal parking.
And then I guess another thought stemming off of what Laura was saying was, by it kind of benefiting Spoons too, is this going to open up something where, back where Kramer's are, are they going to want that, that road shut off so they've got more accessibility for outside seating?
I don't, I don't, I just, I don't see it, I don't, I don't see that occurring, but, you know, we, I think we, we address every situation that comes up on its merits. And if that doesn't make a lot of sense, I, I don't think it goes anywhere.
I think what we're, we're, we are suggesting making this a walkway and a walkway only. If someone wants to do something different with that space, whether it be the bank or Spoons or anyone else for that matter, they have to come to us, to the city, and talk to us about it, and we have to decide if we think it's a good idea or a bad idea. There are so many unknowns, Ray, we just, we don't know until we say, well, let's, let's lock it off, let's see what happens, let's see how people use it. If it's a problem, if it's an issue, then we, we modify.
If it was a walkway alone, I would not have a problem with it. It is going to benefit the Spoons. If we do not allow the Spoons to put tables on the side of this walkway, then fine. But when we are allowing one restaurant to benefit from this, that's something I do not want to open.
You know, again, we want to encourage the development of outdoor dining, that's a.
And they have in the front of their sto, in front of their restaurant. They don't need additional.
Well, it could relieve what we see on Main Street, especially in front of the travel agencies.
And where does Kramer's relieve, or Schooners, or the Italian, or Neil's and Shorty? There's no, we're not offering any relief for them to add additional dining.
Well, they're, you know, Neil and Shorty's has a very long front, they're in the shade, and they also have a huge courtyard in the back that they're going to be accessing for, for outdoor seating. So, you know, again, we take everything as they come, and we, we address everything on its merits. As for Ray's point, there, we do have a, another walkway on South Main next to the Boston's Pharmacy. Ideas have been raised within the Main Street Steering Committee and also from the Community Division Workshops that were held last fall. There are ideas for that space, we just have to get, we just have to get the ball rolling on it, and I'm hoping that we finalize some plans hopefully within the next year. So hopefully that, see something good come from that walkway as well.
I, I get the sense that there's a resistance here, and I would like to ask if the council members would just give me that ninety days window to try it, if you would give me the courtesy. You know, over the winter, we were looking at hockey rinks, and because the weather didn't participate in the program, that was the only factor that we could control, but we, we were going to go in the hockey business for, for a couple of months, and, and I just think that that was a, there was times that people said to me, why are we going to be in hockey business? Because of liability with people and ice skates and, and ice, but, and I know that we were working with the high school on that, I know, sistering with them.
But that benefited the community. If we were to go forward with this, with the stipulation for the ninety days that you are asking for, that no outdoor seating will take place on the side of the building and keep it in front of the building, then I would think about it. But that stipulation that it would not be a benefit to the Spoons to add additional dining would have to be added.
I think that the, the outdoor dining is such a critical thing today on Main Street, both north and south, that if, if Spoons, and I've never talked with the owners of Spoons about this, I've never brought this up, but if they've invested in a dilapidated old building that I thought probably should have been tore down based on that brick wall, but they, they took the initiative and remodeled that building and invested money in it, and I think that if they ended up by happenstance of being their location that they benefit, I don't have a problem with that, because, you know, the, the bank's going to sell their building, and whoever buys that bank building is going to benefit from having this walkway too. And so we're not just talking about Spoons, I, I think we're being short-sighted, thinking that because we're coming up with a proposal that might benefit Spoons initially, you know, you've got to think about the bank building, and if the bank had an issue, they would have expressed it to the mayor, saying, that's a reservation we have a concern over. Instead, again, Mayor, it wasn't in the conversation, they, my understanding was they were very positive towards this idea.
They are, and whether, I don't know if they're going to keep that building or not, you know, I know they're taking ownership over, I think sometime in June, but if they were not to keep it, I mean, you mentioned it earlier, that having that street closed and have access to that street could be a, a vital selling point in, in selling that building to someone that would want to use or utilize that space. So I, I do look at it as a community, it's a community improvement, and it's moving Princeton forward, it's, it's along the same vein that we've been talking about for the last two years in trying to revitalize our Main Street, it's right up that alley, and I think it's a great idea. I fully support, I mean, as far as, you know, moving forward with this, and I don't know, I did talk to our city attorney, John, before the, before the meeting, and wanted to get this discussion out and see where we work with it, before John would check our city code, our ordinances, on, on whether or not we need an ordinance to, to close the street on a temporary basis. John's feeling, I think, was that we have pretty.
Probably would, yeah. And this being just a, kind of like a new business discussion, it would need to be on the agenda as an action item at some later time in whatever format.
So if we have, you know, going forward, it sounds.
I, I think we have to try. We have to see what happens. Let's see what comes out of all this. If we get, we have problems and issues, then we, we address them one at a time. Let's just see how it works as a walkway and see if we, if issues develop as a result of it. We can afford not to.
I would really appreciate if my council members would all be unanimous on this, but I feel like I'm not aiming on this. Laura, you're, you're not supportive of it, we don't.
I am supportive of it if it was a true only walkway.
And I, I think limiting, not having some tables out there controlled by the city's restrictions that might be in play, I think that we're short, changing the opportunity for additional outdoor dining that seems to be such a hot item in any community we go to.
Or the city could just put picnic tables out there and entice family picnics. We don't need the Spoons to put tables out there.
I appreciate that, I just, I think that they should have the opportunity to have their, their tables out there if they wanted, and as well as that lure was new over the bank.
It is a lure, it's what brings people to Princeton. You, you give them reasons to come to town, you give them, you know, very nice restaurants, you give them the availability of outdoor dining, and, and that's, it's, it's all good. I don't, I had, I see absolutely no downside whatsoever going forward with this.
The downside I see is every restaurant on Main Street is going to want extra dining. You have Beats Me, who has a beautiful deck in the back. Why don't we close down their alley? No one uses that. Why don't we make a petty walk there? Why don't they, why can't they expand tables? I can go on with every restaurant and just hear what they are saying.
Do you really know that, Laura? I mean, no one's asked us for any of those requests, no one's made any requests like that. I mean, and no one made a request about this, this came from our commissioner, so, from Ray, so let's.
I understand that, but if we are doing it for one, it is going to be expected that we do it for all.
Don't you think we can address their concerns, though? We, that in terms of making public space access to the back end of a Beats Me store, I mean, I don't know, it just seems like we're just making a mountain out of a little hill here.
I believe we are opening up a can of worms we do not want to open.
Ray, Swanson, do you have anything more?
Do we call for a vote on this, or?
No, I, I think Ray was just looking for, see if it'd be unanimous. Yeah, discussion and going forward with it.
I think you have three people that are behind you, Ray, I don't know if, if Ray, Swanson, and Laura would support it just on a trial basis, but I would support it. I would hope, though, that Spoons fixes those, the location of those two signs around their store before we do this.
We have a consensus, so let's move forward, and we'll move on. Any old business?
Yes, I was just wondering, Mayor, you had mentioned, I don't know, two months ago, about the summit, the second summit, and I was just wondering, do you have any details on the TIF that you had mentioned?
Well, we want to talk about TIF districts at this, because this is going, this, this summit is going to be held July, yeah, we chose a date, I can't remember the date, middle of July, it's going to be a Thursday. But the, the summit's going to involve the school districts. We want the school, school districts to come in along with our industry partners, we want the school boards to come in, we'd like teachers to come in, administration, and we want to talk about the viability of TIF districts in the, in the City of Princeton. There's a couple of places that would, I think would be ideal for TIF districts, and so that's going to be a discussion. I'm hoping that we can get a couple of speakers to come in from other communities that have that very, a lot of success with TIF districts, to, to give their play on it as well, but I think it's highly important we have that discussion, so it's going to be the main topic anyway.
And you said a couple districts, would, where would they be?
Well, I just, the Harper Wyman site for one, I think would be an outstanding, and not only the Harper Wyman site, I think there's other areas throughout that area that could be considered for a TIF district. I think if you go out on Far West Peru Street, I think that area out there, it could be qualified for, for a TIF district. Communities also have TIF districts in their downtown areas, not that that's something that we would do, but something we could discuss, but those are two areas that I didn't think of.
Harper Wyman to me would be a perfect application for that.
Do you know, have they cleaned up this side? They have.
It's recorded at the courthouse.
Of course, the building's in very, very bad shape.
Right, but the toxics that I.
It's clean.
It's clean.
So that's going to be coming out, I mean, we do have a date, I don't have it. So that's going to be coming out, I mean, we do have a date, I don't have it, and Brian Gift is going to be sending out save dates, so we can get, it's going to be holidays, same place the initial one was held, so, looking forward to that. Any other old business? Any new business?
Mayor, have you been, Laura, ladies?
Nope, go ahead, age before beauty.
I'll take that. Okay, Mayor, just like saying, a couple things, I know that the Z-Tour is coming up, and I apologize, I've never participated in that, I want to admit that, I'm excited about that, and I want to get on that bicycle, and I wanted to encourage the council members, maybe we get 100% participation. I, I went out and bought myself a bicycle helmet, my kids told me, they said, Dad, you're 58 years old, you need a helmet, so I, I got the helmet now, I think I'm ready to go, but I'm looking forward to that. I'd like to challenge every one of those council members...
So now you're all fired up you want us to get fired?
Yes, I, I am, I'm a late comer on that, I admitted it, you know what I mean, but I, I want to let you know, I've, I've accepted Jesus, I see... So, my point would be is, I'd like to challenge each of the council members to take a leg of that, that bike route. You know, Z-Tour is a great thing, and they built that up, and built it up, and built it up, so I'll be out there with my helmet on and riding the bike, and I'll see just how much I can do.
You, you can go on the 30-miler with us.
Okay, I...
So you, you need to do a little training.
I'll drive the trolley and pick up anyone with a flat tire.
Or who passes out.
Or who passes out.
Don't worry, Ray, we'll have first base stations out there.
I appreciate that, CPR is important to know.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
Um, yes, on behalf of Cipasa, I would like to thank Rachel, Street Department, Police Department, and the Electric Department for aiding us in the Living Works Suicide Walk. Without the city of Princeton, it would not have been successful, so thank you very much.
Good job.
Good job. Any other new business?
Um, yes, just one thing, um, now, I have heard, Mayor, or I'd like to hear about your plan for parallel parking on South Main.
There is no plan for parallel parking on South Main.
That's, it's gone.
Yeah, I, I did my due diligence on that, I walked up and down South Main Street, I talked to all, most, well, 20 merchants anyway, and actually, by two-to-one margin, everybody thought it was a good idea to do a trial basis, but everybody, including the, including the majority of them, thought it would be good. Everybody has concerns about parallel parking, people don't like to parallel park, they don't know how to parallel park, there is also a, a loss of some parking stalls. So I, I, I just helped, I just wanted to get, I wanted to go up and get people's ideas and thoughts of it, and so...
So it's no longer...
Not for me, you can bring it up.
Dead on arrival.
Dead on arrival. Dead on parallel parking.
Any other new business? Any public comment? I will entertain a motion to adjourn for our next meeting.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn our regular meeting and reconvene our next council meeting on Monday, June 19th, 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall.
Second.
Motion's the second called.
Commissioners Swanson...
Aye.
That's council people Swanson. Mayberry...
Aye.
Fabio...
Aye.
Newman...
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell...
Aye, this meeting is adjourned, thank you for...
Not people. Not people.
You're under a lot of pressure, a lot of pressure, a lot of...
Did they ever cut it? No, no, we just don't...
Joel, let me know when you leave, I've got something in the car I want to give you.